August 24th, 2021. Will everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any minutes to approve for this meeting. We'll do that at the next meeting. We'll start with a roll call. Richard Campbell.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Ed Mioshi.
Sarah Bloto.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is I Park Visitor Center. Mr. Cotter?
Yes.
So, Mr. Cotter, I just want to say, I think I speak on behalf of the board, that we are really excited about the things that I Park is doing. We were a little disappointed and surprised by the lack of process, but we're eager to get things back on stream with this meeting. So, we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you, and thank you for accommodating the timing. Or, just a little bit of background. So, the Visitor Center and Food Hub, as originally presented, the functionality and purpose of the space is still primarily going to be for Visitor Center and the Food Hub, which is a large part of it. We have added, we do have the original movie and the celebration of the Hudson Valley farmer. There are 10 two-minute movies of 10 farmers from the Hudson Valley, and there's a five-minute movie. That's an introduction of the Hudson Valley and the history of the farming that celebrates sort of Fish Gill and its role in the Hudson Valley as a farming community. In the course, and we also have a number of the food vendors, which we will be layering on, including some of the ice cream and some of our manufacturers that are manufacturing on the property. So, that's still very much going ahead. In the course of it, the so-called original visitor's space, we have sort of recognized that we may not have enough interest to just fill it just with some of the things that we just mentioned. So, we have added the ability to add artwork of various types, local artists in some cases. So, the first present, the first show, which is the Upstate Arts Society is having their opening ceremony there for opening of Arts, Upstate Arts Week on Friday, and I believe. So, the Visitor Center, that building or whatever, that the front room will be more flexible space than it was originally intended. But at this point, the so-called Visitor Center and Food Hub is very much in, totally in keeping what we originally presented. One of the big changes, just to be upfront, and we appreciate everyone coming here, is in the course of trying to construct the building and obtain materials, we did have a number of problems obtaining, like the black roof siding and a number of other things. And we did probably improperly substitute some materials, particularly the siding. We haven't been able to secure our silo, which we intend completing. But we did substitute, and it was more of an artist's decision, for lack of a better word, which we think is, but it's certainly a different look. And we did not consult with the board or the ARB. And we did meet with them on the site. And we did hear some of their displeasure, frankly, about that. So, I think we endeavored with them, and we certainly are open to hearing that we confirm sort of our understanding, anyway, that we'd come back with some renderings of exactly what we've done. And then, what was the original plan, which frankly, just is different siding. And we appreciate that some of the ARB were surprised because the look, it's, we ended up making a building that looks like it's always been there, as opposed to a new building, which was frankly, the intention of the designer who advised us on this. But it wasn't the original intention of the board. So, that's probably the original, that's probably the biggest difference when you speak to process, you know, that we probably should have consulted on the board before we went ahead with that. We did find ourselves in a ridiculous situation, which hasn't happened to us, frankly, in trying to obtain materials. And in some cases, you know, we were promised like windows and siding and things, and they were, in some cases, four and five months late. What happened to us, which was very unfortunate, is we agreed to do this Upstate Art Week, and we signed up for the opening event, which is on Friday. And frankly, if we didn't commit to that, we probably wouldn't have forced a lot of these things through and could have taken a little more time. Not, not, not that that in any way diminishes, you know, what we did on the substitution of materials. But that's what caused us to sort of, you know, fast pace this in a way we probably wouldn't have in another situation. But I think we are still committed to, you know, it's our hope that when it's completed, we have landscaping. We did paving and a lot of site work. And hopefully, as many of you as possible will come on Friday. It's our hope that maybe you'll recognize that it may be a nice alternative, even though it wasn't originally contemplated. But if there's such strong feelings of the board, we would be committed to changing the siding. If that's, you know, there's much passion for that. So, I think that's sort of our undertaking.
I'm looking at your paperwork here, and not only was the material substitution, but you're also saying that because of the delay with the windows, you had to alter the design. How much of a design alteration are you talking about?
The only design we did, we eliminated. The building, just to be very specific, the building footprint and the building's heights and the envelope of the building has not changed. The only thing that we did do is we weren't able to get the kind of windows we wanted. So, the front facade is, just has a band of windows around it. So, it, you know, we did, we eliminated windows, but we did not change the angles of the, you know, everything else. And the porches and everything were done per the original design.
But the current, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And we haven't been able to get, we had a plan for a silo that we were supposed to put there, but that proved a little more, not quite practical to relocate it and then building the new one and obtaining some of the materials. But we are, we have seemed to found another option for that, and we hope to get that up by the spring.
But that, that does change the footprint, not having that there.
It's, we poured the pad for that, so it's ready. So, you know, when we do put it up, it will be exactly as designed. So, at the moment, it's just a blank pad.
And it's allowed the connectivity to the existing structure so that there can be accessibility from inside this structure?
Well, temporarily, we just closed, there's a, there was a door. It's a 16-foot diameter. It didn't turn out to be frankly, practical for the movie. We thought we were going to put the movie in there, but the way the projections worked and also, we ended up with an alternative interior room. But we would, we do have a plan for it to open up the door, you know, once we get it in place, open up the door to allow exactly what we proposed originally.
So, based on the existing engineering for that footprint, with the silo included, is it prepared to be able to accept and have that built as it sits today?
Yes, 100%, because we actually poured the rebar and the footings, and we have, you know, it had the engineer certify for its load and all that sort of thing.
And I know you said the footprint and the envelope is the same, but did the roofline change? Because when I looked at your elevations that we had in our approval, approved plans versus what I'm seeing, it seemed like the roof should have come down to about where the bottom of the new windows are. So, did you just, did you raise it a little bit to fit those windows in on the side?
No, 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 the height of the building, I believe, is exactly the same.
No, I thought, I think the height may be the same. It looked like the roof pitch had changed a little bit. That's what I was.
It wasn't, not that we're aware of. The only thing that may have been shown is the overhang of the roof eaves were slightly longer, but I'm not exactly aware of it. It wasn't by design.
So, can you tell us your understanding that you had when you met with the Architectural Review Commission?
Sure. There was some displeasure with the physical appearance of the siding, which is a galvanized steel that was, it's a process whereby you take the steel and you prime it, and then you spray it with acid. It makes it look old, even though it's, you know, so we did, it's a technique, and it has been used in a number of sort of trendier buildings that have gone up in a lot of places, like Montana and, you know, Colorado and things like that. So, that's where its inspiration came from. But it was different, so we were very, and the board told us that. So, we said that we would come back with three renderings. One, the original, one of what it looks like now, and one, if we have any, something in between that we'd like them to look at. And I, and I believe that we said we would try to get them that by the October meeting, and that we would endeavor if there was a, you know, if they felt strongly about it, that we would redo the siding, if that's what it took. I think, is that, I don't know if that's fair, or certainly, it's, that was what we believe we said, so I don't want to, in any way.
But never at any time was there a stop-work order issued or anything on the job site?
There was a stop-work order issued related to, we had to switch architects in the process. We had some issue with the structural engineer. He didn't want to continue. He joined another firm, so we found ourselves, we had to take on a different engineer and a different team. But one of the, we hadn't fully submitted the appropriate plans. We were having some discussions with, you know, the building department. So, one of the, whether it was a miscommunication, but in, you know, striving to sort of rush everything, we, we did get a stop-work order, which I believe we honored. You know, we certainly didn't proceed after that happened. And then, we had a number of meetings with the town engineer and the building department to get a full list of what was deficient. And we brought in another team of different people to make sure that, you know, we had the right people, because, and I believe we submitted plans and currently do have a building permit.
And the stop-work order has been lifted.
Yes, that was lifted about a week ago, after we submitted the appropriate plans. And we did, just for the board's peace of mind, we did agree to, we provided sprinklers in the building, you know, the, obviously, the primary concern is health and human safety. So, there were some issues about, one of the big issues with the stop-work was the ability to use the bathrooms in the Food Hub building from the museum or Visitor Center itself. So, in connecting those buildings, we had two different uses, which required sprinklers, which wasn't intended originally. And so, we did go ahead, and we have had sprinklers installed, and I believe they're certified. And we also did include a number of fire safety components that the town engineer and their team requested, so.
Great. So, have you been cleared for the opening to the public that you plan on Friday?
Well, I, I'll leave that to the town engineer. Where there's one, we have a porch that we are having. There was some concern about the way the structural steel was attached. So, we have a test to make sure that some of the beams are correct, which we're trying to do tomorrow or Thursday, which I believe, if that's successful, then we'll be able to open this sort of outdoor porch. In the event it fails, which is, you know, not expected. We do have it certified, but there was some additional concern. And in the world of Surfside and some of the other structural issues, you can never be too careful. So, we did take the counsel of the town engineer, and we did have that. So, we're engaging to do that. I believe it's Thursday. I don't know, Scott, if you've heard anything. But we did, we did endeavor to get that done.
Yeah, that would be a condition of a temporary seal, at least for them to open up the porch. If they can't complete that, then that area will remain off limits until it has been completed.
So, just the exterior of that porch with the overhang?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
That's what that pertains to, yeah.
Okay.
So, there is a temporary seal on the building itself?
There is no temporary seal right now. There is no temporary, that's what they're hoping to gain by this weekend, is the temporary seal, so they can hold their function. So, this is kind of right down to the wire.
What else is required in order to get that temporary seal?
Well, one thing is appear before this board and get the town's, the planning board's consent of their amended usage. And then, the building inspector's got to do his final walkthrough. He's on vacation right now. I think he returns Thursday. So, you know, there's been a lot of work done in the last week to try to meet, you know, the requirements. So, when he comes back, he'll do his walkthrough. And as Mr. Cotter said, if they get the pull test done, you know, that's what we're working towards right now, is at least a temporary seal.
So, if they were to be issued a temporary seal, what period of time does that give them to occupy? And when does it end?
We haven't talked about that too much, but in my mind, a 30- to 60-day temporary seal, something on that order.
We do have some timeframes listed in a resolution, by the way, that relate to the submission to the Architectural Review Commission, and then a final recommendation to the planning board.
Yeah, because of course, all that needs to resolve before a final seal can be issued, yeah.
What about the signage, Michelle? The building has now two signs painted on the surface of the building. The original approval, I think, included hung signs, right, on the face of the front?
Yeah, I'm putting, I'll pull the picture up. So, yeah, there's, right now, the sign is on the side of the building here, and then on the other side, which you can't see in this photo.
On the side of the gym side?
Yeah, so technically, you need a sign permit for that. And we would need to probably go to the sign review board, because this isn't going to meet code. So, the sign review board would be, you'd have to submit to us, and then we'd have to hold a meeting between the sign review board members.
You lost your image on the TV.
Is that?
Is it a public, is it required on a non-public road?
It's required for anything, because we went to the sign review board for all of the signs so far in your, in your, in your.
Even on the interior roads?
Yeah, on the buildings, all of them. We've gone to the sign review board for, even like the 700, the numbers and everything.
This one was meant to be more of a mural. It was done by an artist that wasn't.
Is it going to be permanent, or are you going to get rid of it once the exhibit's over?
I'm sorry, done as a mural? It's, we're talking about the white.
Yeah, the white one was done by a muralist. It wasn't, it's not, it's, it's meant to be artistic, but you know, I'm not certainly here to, or qualified to talk about.
Oh, look at it this way. I mean, the ARB weighs in on the, you know, the facade of your building, the color, the texture, you know, same thing with the sign. You know, your building's on a prior real, but the ARB still weighs in on what it's going to look like, so regardless.
So, with the facade being the way that it currently is, what plan do you have to continue and like kind of tie in the addition to the original building? Because the original plan, it seemed kind of seamlessly.
Well, I think if you look at the original plan, if you look at the building to, as you're facing it to the right, it does work as tied in. There are windows into the Food Hub, if you will, and it ties into where the restaurant, James Bakes, is, and it's landscaping. So, I think that side does, we certainly think it works. On the other side, there's an overhang that only goes about a third of the space, and what's going west of that is going to be Sloop is going in there, you know, the brewery. So, I don't think that industrial piece was ever intended to mesh. You know, there will be some, you know, industrial operations, but that's where the brewery and then their tasting room will sort of connect into where the Food Hub is. But that's what it was designed to. But if you do look at it, and I think it kind of will speak for itself. I think if you were able to go out there today, and we just finished paving and some additional site work and landscaping for Friday, I think you'll see that it does tie together quite nicely, except for the far west end, which is going to be an industrial use.
Yeah, the one side with, you know, where it connects to like the bakery, and you know, you can see, I was out there earlier today. The heaving looks great, the landscaping or the intention of landscaping looks great, all the plants are still on the sidewalk. But the other side, by the road, it looks very much like cut off, like there's a building, and then it looks like it was attached to another building.
Right, well, that's going to, there is a little bit of work to be done there. We did have trouble with the railings, for instance. You know, we, we had trouble getting the railings for that side, so that's not going to be open for the event, that side. But even when it is completed, it will really be up to, it will be up to where the overhang is. And then, the rest of that is meant to be for Sloop. You know, they're, they're going to move in. It will probably not be in for about a year, because they have to do all sorts of equipment ordering and things like that. But we think it will kind of tie together nicely once they're there, because they're, you know, it's meant to be, the correct name of it should probably be the Industrial Arts Center. It's meant to sort of draw more on the industrial IBM nature of it. So, that's where it has kind of morphed, because when Sloop goes in there, it will certainly be an operating facility, as well as this sort of, as we call it, Food Hub and Visitor Center.
One of the other things on your original plan was to add in addition to the, to the James Bakery for covered seating. Is that changing now with?
No, in fact, that was one of the ones. We did have some trouble getting the siding, her roof, but we did pour the pad per the plan, so.
That's where the picnic tables are now?
Yeah, there's a concrete pad, so, and the sidewalk work that actually just happened today sort of connected that in. And I think that's, that's going to be the next step, if you will.
Okay, so do we need or have a phasing plan for the construction, for what is done and not done, or?
In terms of site work or internal, in terms of site work? Well, I think the site work I was going to bring up is another thing to resolve. Since the original plan, some parking spaces, and Michelle, I know, we talked about this, have been removed to facilitate a little more landscape and greenery in front of the, I guess, dining, outdoor dining area to the right. And, but that all needs to be illustrated on an updated plan. I don't know if they've submitted that yet.
We did send a letter to Michelle, which we did discuss, because the original site plan had the parking like flush to that outdoor porch. And it was, I don't think we or anyone realized how intrusive it would be. So, we eliminated, I believe, eight or 10 parking spots when we sent the letter. So, we eliminated the ones that were parallel to the porch. They were literally flushed to the porch, and then we eliminated one other row. So, it's given us, and if Sarah, if you were there today, given us a much bigger area for landscaping buffer. So, our intention is to make outdoor tables and just make it a people place and do some interesting landscaping, you know, probably won't happen immediately, but we do have various trees, and we think it will become a good focal point. And when we finish the bakery, you know, their overhang. So, we think, you know, our ideal flow over time, and it will probably happen in layers, because we have, a number of the food vendors are still on the come. We've kind of rushed to get the first, and it's going to be, just to be clear, it's going to be open weekends only at first. And the way the art component works is that, I believe, we have 10 weekends now of this exhibit. And then, after that, we're hoping to get certified, the building to get certified by this organization called Art Bridge. And once you do that, you have to, you know, and the building was, we believe, is going to work to that standard. Then, we can borrow or loan exhibits from almost any museum. So, we could, for instance, we're going to be working with Bard in Smithsonian on one, the Norman Rockwell Museum, we're in touch with, and, you know, major museums. So, we can have our own, we don't have to supply, you know, we don't have to create exhibits, which are very difficult. So, we think, and we'll end up probably with just an event-driven, you know, maybe seasonal situation that will, you know, let's say, a fall festival or like, we're hoping on Columbus Day weekend to have the farmers that were all filmed, so there's going to be a farming, you know, harvest festival on that weekend, where we have Fish Gill Farms, for instance. They're going to be participating. We have Clinton Vineyards, they're coming Friday as well. And a few, we hope to have a series of other vendors. So, it will become, we hope, you know, something, a destination. It is a nonprofit, by the way, the museum, so it's not, you know, it should be hopefully, a good public amenity for the community.
So, Joe, how many people do you expect to come this week, this, for the opening?
For the opening, there's RSVPs for somewhere about 150 to 200. That was the last that I heard, but it's from 12 to 3, so.
It could come over that length of time.
Yeah, I don't, you know, we have, because Sloop's not there, we have, I think we have an excess of 200 or 300. You know, we have quite a lot of parking, and it's a brand-new parking lot, and they're supposed to be striped by then. So, it will probably never be so easy to park. But then, it's really only going to be open on weekends, you know, for the rest of the fall. And I don't know exactly when it ends, but I believe it was 10 weeks or something.
And just to go back to the, to the mural on the side, are you intending that that will be there temporary and will change? Or is that, what's the plan for that? Because I'm trying to figure out how we.
I think we'd like it to be permanent. It was.
You want, you'll have the Barnes Art Center up?
Yeah, we think that's, I mean, that's a look that, you know, the artists, they. The other thing is, our hope is that we will have artists in residence over time, where we have local artists. And there's one area where we're hoping to engage the high schools for, to display local artwork. I mean, one of the primary objectives is that, you know, since IBM's left, the campus is somewhat sterilized. So, the primary purpose is to sort of create more of a people place and give us some food options and give the campus a little bit of life. So, I know we've probably been a little overzealous in trying to hit our deadline, but it's like cleaning out your garage, you know? If you have a party on the Saturday, you finally get it done. If we didn't have a deadline, it would probably have taken us another six months. But anyway, that's.
So, in keeping with some of the facade stuff, is it your intention down the road, because I know this site is going to have a mixed broad use of uses. So, is there going to be any continuity to what you're doing here that will carry through the site? Like when you get to, let's say, the curb appeal of coming down 52, it's still that very sterile, very, you know, generic industrial-looking facility. So, would this be a look that's going to kind of carry through to some of the other places? Or will these be like one-offs?
To be honest, the campus is so overwhelmingly large. I don't, I'm not, and the uses, you know, we really have, you know, there's the technology uses, there's warehouse. You know, I think this is the only area that we have any opportunity to commercialize. That's why we've done it here. We weren't able to, so I think this is sort of our people, that's why we moved the health club there, you know, powerhouse is there. So, we kind of think this will be our people place. So, it is, does have some really attractive, mature trees, you know, as part of the campus. And if you go across the street to the east, sort of where the vantage of this picture was taken, there's an open lot that may allow for future parking, or even if one wanted to, you know, do other uses there, that would sort of be a continue, continuation of this. But I think this is probably one of our only openings. The other buildings, they're kind of that brutalist architecture. We have no, you know, we've, we've done a lot of faceless, but we have no idea what to do with some of the other ones. And they are, some of them, for the most part, are technology or manufacturing uses. So, we don't think there's, you know, that much opportunity for the public, anyway. But this one, we think could.
So, basically, to answer my question, this will primarily be a one-off, like this facade?
It's not really enough, I mean, you know, I defer to the Architectural Review Committee, but there's not really any sort of architectural theme. The campus is pretty eclectic. So, this one is an attempt to sort of soften. I mean, this building was particularly harsh, so we tried, we tried our best and just, the space itself inside, the functionality of it, I think, will be great. It's, it's big, open spaces, and it's the kind of spaces people you'll see in some sort of more like a, you know, loft-type situation. So, we think it will be appealing for people to come and, you know, walk around and hopefully be well-used.
So, my last question, for right this second. Based on our original approvals, they eliminated parking spaces. Did that change anything for us to have to decide on with regards to the approvals, you know, and him having enough parking? And were there any handicap spots eliminated when they? any handicap spots eliminated when they eliminated?
Let me just, let me just, and then, first, so what I suggested is they need to demonstrate on our plan a bank parking area across the way, okay, and if it doesn't need to be built, that's fine, but I think on a plan that they need to get before the board for us to sign, so they can finally get a, a permanent seal, we at least need to show that bank parking, because I think the whole parking thing here, it's such a large campus, we, we've looked at individual uses, they've, they've done a tabulation, that all looks good, it didn't include this, you know, deletion right here, but I think there's room to put bank parking, and I think until the smoke settles and you see what type of trip generation this ultimately, you know, generates, I think then the board will still have the, you know, the ability to say, okay, you gotta put 20 parking spaces and you gotta put 30 parking spaces.
Because we talked about like buses coming in there and, and how the traffic flow would be and all these different.
And that we've gone over with HVEA, how they're gonna handle the buses, so part of this, you know, they're trying to get a TCO, I, I think ultimately they may be coming back to the board once they finalize the plan and the smoke settles a little bit, you know, honestly, this has almost been a little bit of a design build, you know, and I know that the purpose kind of changed kind of last minute for them and they've been, you know, hustling to try to meet, meet an obligation, but, you know, we still have an obligation to make sure that, you know, everything works properly, so as long as we handle the hate, the health and safety and, and get them a TCO and, and the board feels comfortable that we're moving in the right direction, they have changed their professionals, there were some issues with that, but I think we're moving in the right direction, getting that on board, and I think this is, you know, their first endeavor to put new footprint out, everything in the past has been like a internal retrofit, so I think they've gone through some learning curve, growing pains with, you know, expanding the footprint and hopefully, you know, everybody, you know, they learn moving forward, you know, they dot the i's and cross the t's a little better, you know, next time around, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I just ask, with the, with the proposed, um, expansion of the art use, do you have, intend to have any outdoor sculpture or any outdoor?
Yeah, well, the.
Artistic features?
We've been approached by, um, a group called Future Farmers, they're a European company and they wanna do some sort of installation, an art installation, so, um, you know, we've not started anything, we've just seen some plans from them, but, um, I think we're open to trying to create this as our destination and make it more of a focus of art, so, you know, um, but we're, that would be something we're considering, put it that way, they're, they're, um, they did some interesting project in Oslo, Norway, but we, we came upon them through, uh, the person who's running the art museum, she's a, uh, you know, she studied museum curation or whatever, so they have an idea to create something that, uh, uses mill stones like we see in our lobby and they grind wheat and then they have a place where you bake bread, it's not for sale, it's like a community, uh, space, which seems pretty interesting, so, you know, some, as Scott said, we're, you know, learning, it's a little bit of a learning curve on trying to create something, uh, in a place that hasn't had any real focal point for the public, you know, so it's, so we're trying to come up with something with the arts leading it, because we think that's really what's missing and, you know, like you see in towns like Beacon and Hudson, sometimes the arts kind of, uh, lead the way, so we, we've, uh, this isn't something I typically, it's not necessarily something, but I, but I have seen it work in other towns, so this is more, I wouldn't call it experimental, but we did put ourselves out a little bit and we think it will, um, bring rewards to the community, because it will hopefully, um, you know, sort of attract a different type of look than just, um, you know, visits to a brewery or something.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from board members or professionals? If not, we do have a resolution to, to grant temporary approval, um, and I'll read this and just want to make sure that it fits your understanding of where we were going. Addendum to resolution of amended site plan approval, name of the site plan is I Park Visitor Center and Food Hub, name of applicant, I Park East Fishkill LLC. Whereas the above referenced applicant applied to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board for an amended site plan approval to construct a visitor's center slash food hub, whereas a portion of the visitor's center slash food hub will be used to showcase art, whereas the planning board has approval authority over the architectural features of the building, whereas the applicant modified the approved architecture and its final design due to constraints related to COVID-19 material shortages, whereas the action is considered a type-two action or seeker and no further seeker reviews required. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves the modified architecture as constructed, subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant will provide revised architectural renderings slash elevations to the Architectural Review Council to be reviewed and considered at the ARC's October meeting. After the meeting, the ARC will provide recommendations to the planning board at the next scheduled planning board meeting. Michelle, would number two be approval or review by the, of the sign?
Yeah, we have to include, um, we have to include the sign review board, yeah.
Okay, so number two, review by the sign review board, are there any other conditions?
I thought that Scott wanted something with the bank parking, is that gonna be a condition?
Yeah, I guess number three would be submission of an amended, uh, site plan reflecting all, uh, changes, because there were some, uh, changes they made with the sidewalk entering, obviously a deletion of the parking spaces, also omitted, uh, a section of sidewalk, you know, light poles, lighting, I mean, we need a full comprehensive site plan, which will also be, I guess, conditioned.
Well, the silo missing too, right?
I'm sorry?
The silo missing too?
No, that's gonna be before the final.
Before our final, before our final approval.
Before the final.
Which will be no.
Will be the site plan, yeah, an updated site plan.
Okay.
What, what about the usage, Michelle, is the, we originally approved this primarily as food, does?
Yeah, as a visitor's center, food hub, and now it's, a portion of it is a, um, art, I mean, I, I tried to capture that with the whereas clause at the top, we can modify that a little bit if we feel like we need to, um.
It seems like this new building is all art and there's still gonna be food, but it's not gonna be in this portion of the building, right?
It's still gonna be food and the movie, the movie, uh, space, which was gonna happen in this building is in the food hub, it's about 200 square feet.
The food portion is in the existing building, the art, correct, is in the front portion.
Okay, so this is not, is this the whole?
But there is a visitors', I mean, the reason it's segregated is in order to comply with future, uh, this art bridge concept, they don't allow you to mix food and art, in this particular exhibit we have, uh, it's not one of those, so we could technically have people and food in this, because this is an assembly of primarily local artists, so, but let's say we did get an exhibit from, you know, the Smithsonian or Bard, one of the conditions would be that it's, uh, segregated in the food, because, you know, they don't want someone with an ice cream cone dripping on them.
So all I'm suggesting though is that our current approval is specific to food with art as an amenity, I think we wanna make sure that we address the usage as primarily art with.
So then we say whereas, whereas.
Well, is it a whereas or is it?
Or, or do we review that when we see the, uh, the completely revised site plan?
They have an art exhibit going in here on Friday, so I would want them to have an approved use.
I think we should say whereas the visitor's center was, was, um, modified to, an art center, basically, I think that's what we have to add.
Better, right, that way they're covered for the usage.
And I, I can do that, was it visitor's center was redesigned as an art center? I can, whereas an art center isn't approved, is a permitted use in this district, it is, so.
Okay.
An art center is a permitted use, and then we'll carry forward.
And then just to bounce back to the parking, Michelle, and site plan, so one of the things in the, in the existing building, we need a, a plan of whether it's tables, kiosks, or whatever, so we can set an occupancy to it, because we're gonna need that occupancy to ultimately take a look at the parking requirement.
Okay, so floor plan with.
That's really, you know, it ties into the site plan, but it's, it's still the interior of the building, so I think that needs to be identified.
Scott, is there any consideration of just like event play, event-based types of like permitting or something like that, just in case something else comes up that's a different thing that?
Well, I think our threshold is, is it 1,000?
500, oh.
Was it 500 or 1,000?
Yeah.
Which is it?
It's 1,000.
1,000, so I don't, I don't see.
For a special event, yeah.
You should be so lucky, I mean.
But if you did get a lot of people at this site, and, and I, I am, because this goes back to your earlier question about parking, you know, I was a little concerned initially, not, not for right away, but, you know, if this were to become a place where people came off the highway, way stopped to get food, because there's nothing else around, then you could potentially have more cars in the parking, but that would probably be in the future, and at that point, we might have to come back.
That's what we want, to show an area for bank parking.
Exactly, exactly.
And we don't need to finalize it, but you gotta at least be able to demonstrate, listen, we got this area for 50 cars or something and let's see how things move forward.
And there might be, you know, a need for him, maybe we could say something to the effect of if there's an event over, we can choose the number here, he needs to do some sort of parking management plan, where they might have to show, where they'd have to valet cars.
Or shuttle, they did mention the ability, because they do have parking.
Other places.
Oh, I think you mean a lot of parking, it's just for this particular building, how are you gonna?
Access it.
So if, if we wanna do that, we could say, in any event over, maybe 250, where they're expecting more than 250 or 300 people.
I don't know, maybe, maybe make it 400, just so we don't have to count, it will be obvious, you know, I wouldn't want to be 252 and.
Is it, is the planning board okay with 400?
Sure.
May require.
That works in the space.
So that's an additional condition?
Yep, I'm adding, that will require submission of a, like a parking management plan, which is just simply a description of what they're gonna do with the.
And I would also add, maybe modified as deemed appropriate by the planning board, you know, we're just taking a shot at this right now, so.
So basically, the goal here is to get them to the finish line for just this event.
And for future weekends where they're gonna be operating.
It's twofold.
I think right now it's a twofold thing, like.
Get them for their immediate need this weekend and for them to understand what they need to do to get a permanent seal, because we're not gonna give this temporary seal indefinitely.
Correct.
Okay, it's gonna be 30 or 60 days and if we're not squared away.
There'll be no extension of that or no ability to extend that, that's, okay.
We did, we did prepare a site plan, uh, it, it probably is missing a few things like the bank parking, but we did, uh, comply with all the handicapped and, and reflected the whole new site, which we did rush to get in, but will, it's probably a good idea longer term, I mean, hopefully, hopefully it becomes a place that people come to, right? If it doesn't get used, uh, I'm sure it will make a nice, I don't know why, figure it out. So if we are lucky enough that it, that we have a parking problem, but we certainly have nothing but parking on site, so we could certainly come up with a very competent parking management plan that would allow for shuttling and things like that, so, um, you know, we are trying to support the local farming community and we are working with a lot of local groups to, you know, uh, bring their products to, to the market, so hopefully it works.
Okay, so, and I take it from your reaction that all of these conditions are clear and acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, um, so ba- based on the resolution as modified with the additional whereas clause and the additional conditions, I think everybody understands, could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Lori, second, we'll do a roll call vote, uh, board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye. It's approved, thank you very much. We have just a few minutes before the zoning board meeting is supposed to commence, um, is there anything we need to do other than establish the public hearing?
Uh, no, we just need to set, um, set the public hearing and we'll need to advertise, um, and I'm not exactly sure, we'll have to work with the town board on, on getting, making sure the advertisements go out, but we'll do that, but we're doing a very similar process to be did with Amazon.
Uh, excuse me. Mr. Carter? Mr. Carter, sorry, we're, we're still meeting, we, we have to, to get a public hearing set up for Project Niagara. Thank you.
So the idea is that, um, you will see the application on the 14th of September, your next, at the September meeting, and then we're gonna set the public hearing for the 23rd, so that you can have a joint public hearing with the town board, so you're hearing what, what the applicant is, um, talking about with regards to the special permit application, because that may affect ultimately the site plan application, it is anticipated that you likely will hold open the site plan public hearing and not close it, similar to what we did with Amazon, so that you'll have additional time to review the, um, the application and the site plan.
Excellent, great. So could I have a motion to schedule a joint public hearing with the, uh, town board for the Project Niagara, which, and the public hearing to be on September 23rd, 2021?
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, guys.